Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to have so many of you joining us this evening. I will go ahead and, as it is 6:30, call the meeting to order. Mr. Cusick, if you will, please perform roll call.
Mrs. Best.
Present.
Mrs. Davis.
Present.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Present.
Ms. Harless.
Present.
Mrs. Hudson.
Present.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to our May 13, 2024 Board Meeting. My name is Nikki Hudson. I have the privilege and pleasure of serving as our Board President this year. To my far left is Board Vice President Kelly Davis, Board Member Amber Epling Skinner, our Treasurer TJ Cusick. To my right, Dr. Bowers, our Superintendent, Board Member Stephanie Harless, and Board Member Jennifer Bast. If you'll please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments, or changes? Seeing none, if you'll, please call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes. Motion carries. So that brings us to the reason why we have a full house tonight, and that is a number of recognitions. So if I may have, please, a motion to recognize Nick Caruso, Head Custodian at Worthington Kilborn High School, for being named a School Facility Support Staff Award winner by the Ohio Association of School Business Officials.
So moved.
So moved. Second. A motion and a second. If you'll please call for the vote.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Excellent. And I'm going to hand this off to Board Member Stephanie Harless. I was going to ask you to come up, but you're...
Yay!
Okay. We would...
Is this one?
Okay. We would like to recognize Nick Caruso for winning the OASBO, and I also had to look that up, so Ohio Association for School Board Officials Award. He was, Nick is the Head Custodian at Worthington Kilborn High School, and last month, he received the OASBO 2024 School Facility Support Staff Award at their annual conference. That was a little bit of a mouthful. We are very, very thankful for all the hard work that you put in, and you and your staff put in. We understand, we all know that you lead by example, and that you are incredibly deserving of this award, and so thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you.
I will just add, if I might, OASBO funded a $500 scholarship in honor of Nick for a student at Worthington Kilborn High School as well, so congratulations.
Excellent. I will say publicly recognizing our student and our staff members is one of our most enjoyable parts of our Board Meetings. So moving on to the next one, if I could receive a motion to recognize Worthington Kilborn High School and Thomas Worthington High School students who participated in the Ohio Governor's Youth Art Exhibit.
So moved.
Think that will count that as a motion and a second? If you'll please call for the vote.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
And you have this next one.
Yep. The Ohio Governor's Art Exhibit is a perfect opportunity for us to recognize our talented art students in the district. As Board Members, we really would like to acknowledge your talent and congratulate you on your awards this evening. We are so fortunate in this district to have such a variety of arts and music and different courses offered to our students and amazing teachers that we have here to help your talents grow. So I would like, for now, our two teachers that are with you, Kim Mauer and Erin Johnson, to come forward, and our students from Kilborn and Thomas. If you would all come on. Yes, yes. So if you are here for any of the awards, the Scholastic, the Children's Hospital, the Governor's Awards, the OCC West Blizzard Art Invitational, if you're here for any of those awards, hopefully that you're all up here by now. This is a great group. Thank you for being here on this really nice evening. I'm going to first turn it over to Mrs. Mauer and ask her to talk a little bit about some of the awards that you all have received.
Okay, this could be dangerous. I can really talk. Okay. So I'm so glad you're all here. Thank you all for coming, and thank you, everybody, for recognizing all of these wonderful students. So I'm going to start with the Scholastic Art Awards. It's an 80-plus-year-old national art recognition program. Lots of luminaries have been recognized, like Andy Warhol for the visual arts and Robert Redford for the art and writing. And so I think how we'll do this is if you were recognized for scholastics, if you could step forward. Ruthie Wolf received a gold key. Riley Sesta received silver key. And then, gosh, there's so many things here. Providence Ottawa, if you would step forward, received silver keys and a gold key for scholastics. I have to read really fast. Casey Harden received three silver keys. And let's see, scholastics. Meredith Button received a gold key and an honorable mention for scholastics. Is anybody else, am I missing someone for scholastics? All right. That show hung at the Columbus College of Art and Design back in February, and the gold keys are currently being judged nationally, and we should know soon what those outcomes were. Governor's, as a state award, the state show is currently hanging down at Rhodes Office Tower, and then the regional show just came down from the McConnell Art Center. So those students are Ryan Smith, Celia Demarie, and Providence Ottawa, Zoe Gottlieb, Casey Harden, Anne Campbell, Emma Marielli, Nikki Moses, Olivia Savage, Naomi Armistead, Meredith Button, Presley Pengway, Meredith Eastup, receiving both state and regional awards. Congratulations. And then this year, we had our first opportunity to do some partnering with Children's Hospital and a liaison, Brian Regal, that actually used to teach here, spearheaded this, and we had students submit artwork, which was then selected by a committee at the Children's Hospital. The artwork is being scanned, and very high-quality prints will hang at Children's Hospital. And so those students are Abigail Dickerson and Adam Sterling, Marie Hemenah, Presley Pengway. And is there anyone else? Am I missing someone? Oh, yes. Is it Ryan Smith? Ryan Smith, I'm so sorry. Congratulations, everybody. Those pieces will be installed, I'm not sure exactly when, but Brian will let us know. Brian Regal will let us know. And then finally, we have a traditional OCC Art Invitational. This year, it was at the Lancaster Library, and for that selected work, we have, I have to read my list. Oh, thank you. Lucy Kavinsky, Liam Karen. Is there anybody from Kilborn? Okay. Congratulations. That is a very traditional OCC Art Invitational, and it was really great this year. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I had a chance to go to the McConnell Art Center and see the regional winners, and my comment after I was there was like, it just gets better every year. You're all so talented, and we really appreciate your hard work and your talent and sharing it with all of us. I am going to have certificates for each of you. I'm going to hand them to Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Mauer, and they can maybe give them to you out in the hall and get them passed out. I have Kilborn, and I have Thomas, and I think Vicki probably wants to take a picture. Maybe we do like two rows, like maybe Ryan, sorry that you're... Maybe you guys could maybe be in the back, and sorry, Meredith, but you might be in front. Yeah, teachers too, too. Okay. Jennifer. All right, ready, smiling? Great, thank you. Congratulations.
The amount of talent in our district never ceases to amaze me. I know. If I may receive a motion to recognize the Worthington Kilborn High School Esports Overwatch II Team for winning the 2024 OSHAA State Championship.
So moved.
We'll take that as a motion and a second. That's excellent. If you'll please call for the vote.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Excellent. Motion carries, and Board Member Amber Epling will take the lead on this recognition.
Yeah, we just want to say congratulations to the Worthington Kilborn High School Esports Overwatch II Team for winning the 2024 OHSAA State Championship. It's a very big deal. Esports can help students develop various vital skills, including critical thinking, problem-solving, teamwork, right? That's a big aspect of it, communication, leadership, digital literacy and engagement, all skills that are transferable into the future, the job market, the university setting, wherever our students choose to go. So we're very thrilled. This season, there were over 130 Overwatch II teams statewide and over 1,000 players, and for the 2024 state-sponsored season, the Wolves won their Division CSE II, the CSE Regional Championship, and the 2024 State Championship. Truly dominating performance by the following students. And as I read your names, if you want to come on up here, along with Coach Gavin Meeks, we'll give some certificates. Logan Amlin, Ivan Chivingston, Savannah Klaus, Luke Kohler, Jonathan Lachuga, Kevin Pelcostray, and Kyle Yan.
Switch microphones here. Coach Meeks, did you want to say a few words? Put you on the spot here.
So I just really want to say how proud I am of this team. We've got some kids here that have been playing on our Overwatch team for a number of years, and it's been kind of a struggle because we've been really close a number of years, and we just have never been able to get over the hump. Luke played on a state championship runner-up team, I think, twice, and it's always hard when you get so close and we just can't quite make it over the hump, and this year, they were dominant. They really, we came back from adversity. We didn't play as well as we wanted to in the fall. We were runner-up in the Fall Championship, which was, it's kind of like what we call the silly season, because it's not really the one that counts, but you still want to win it. And so they were really disappointed. They were kind of bummed out. And then we came back for the spring, and they came back strong, and Savannah Klaus gave me the idea of maybe trying to get a hold of some college teams to work with us and to scrimmage against us to try to make them better. So I want to give a little shout-out to Auderbyon College's coach, Coach Nevin. He came out, and he's just starting a program, so he spent some time with us the last four weeks before the season, of the season, and really tuned these guys up, and they were phenomenal learners and listeners. They did everything that he suggested that they do. A lot of them had to change characters and play some different heroes that they wouldn't normally have played, and it made all the difference in the world, and they were, we were dominant this year. So it was a lot of fun. It was really enjoyable. I just can't say enough good things about these guys. I'm losing a lot of good seniors, and it's just sad to see them go, but I'm glad to see them go out on a high note, so it was a great experience.
Are you okay? Are you at one line or two? I think I just scooted a little bit. But yeah. One line should be okay with us. All right. Ready? Smile. Great. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'll give those to you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to our visitors' comments section of our meeting. Looks like we may have a few, because Vicki's walking up here with the signup sheet, so I will take a few minutes then just to read our standard instructions. The school board and administrative staff encourage and appreciate community interest in meetings of the Board of Education. This section of the agenda is designed to hear the views of community members about their schools and items on the agenda. Each speaker will be asked to address the board at the visitor's podium so that the speaker's remarks may be clearly heard. The speaker should give their name and street address and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with our Policy 9130 on public complaints, we ask that complaints about particular employees be referred to the superintendent and not addressed during public session. We remind all speakers that our district values and respects all people as they are, and that our district is committed to creating and maintaining safe spaces for all of our students and community members. We want to remind our community that we value public input and always appreciate when our community members remember our district's values, refraining from using harmful or offensive language, and for sharing your comments in a civil and respectful manner. It is not our usual practice to respond to remarks during the visitor comment section of our meeting. And with that, I will ask... ...section of our agenda. And the first one is related to curriculum resource adoption.
Good evening. I'd like to just give you a quick summary of our recent curricular resource adoption. So our science curriculum leader, Brian Genius, has worked with a group of teachers who have committed themselves to engage in this recent biology and physical science curriculum adoption. So we will be asking for adoption of a physical science McGraw-Hill that's updating a current version of McGraw-Hill, a newer version from 2017 to 2021. So the new version is a '21 version. The team that Brian worked with noted that this new version will improve online access and school G integration without losing some of the key features like Learn Smart. Learn Smart is an adaptive reading system that guides students through a text periodically, stopping them to check for understanding before allowing them to move on. If the understanding is not shown, it then redirects the student back to the text or images where the topic is described. So teachers who were a part of this physical science updated version are Chelsea Hunderfunt from Worthington Kilborn High School, Beth Luskarden from Worthington Kilborn High School, and Stephanie Matson, also from Worthington Kilborn High School, Ian Sample from Lenworth, Kelly Zabrowski, and Nate Betten Ashi from Thomas Worthington High School, and obviously Brian Genius here at the WEC. The second resource adoption is a biology, currently a McGraw-Hill resource from 2010. So we're asking for a new SAVIS learning resource to replace that. That new SAVIS learning resource... That new Savvas learning resource is a 2019 addition, and I'll explain that in just a minute. But that Savvas Learning Company resource, teachers noted the ability to integrate the resources again through Schoology. Schoology is our online learning management system that is used at our secondary level. So it integrates with that, which is a major improvement in our teacher-student workflow. This will allow students and parents to visit one website, which is Schoology, and access all that they need to be successful in biology. Teachers also noted the comprehensive resources that were available in this Savvas learning textbook. So again, Karen Kohizer, Kelly Chase, and Stephanie Matson from Worthington Kilborn High School were a part of that, Lily Yap from Lenworth, Sarah Court, and Amy Beckstett from Thomas Worthington High School, and again led under the direction of Brian Genius, our curriculum leader. While we know that this process is a necessary process, it really is pretty cool to watch our teachers come together and engage with each other across buildings and see their passion for teaching and learning come to life when they get to make an important decision like this. They may not always agree at first, but that's a part of the process, is really digging into that and making sure that we adopt the most effective resource for our students. One item to note that we discussed at length with our teachers is that while we are currently living in 2024, we are adopting a 2019 and a 2021 textbook. Seems odd to do that, but it really is due to the fact that these are the newest versions that these companies have. We looked at these two publishers. Copyright dates apply to the printed textbook, while these publishers have updated resources for online. So we feel good about that. The team did pilot other publishers like National Geographic with a more recent copyright, but the team decided that the case studies and the lab experiences were not of high quality as they were with Savvas and McGraw-Hill. So this adoption does follow the Worthington Schools Resource Review Process, which includes reviewing five resources during vendor presentations in January. These teams then narrowed the field to two pilot options, which you just heard a little bit about, and then in April, teams reconvened to make their decision. So a recent decision, and we believe that these two new adoptions will allow our teachers to meet the guidelines for the high-quality instructional materials in science, such as integrating inquiry-based instruction, supporting culturally responsive education, utilizing standards-based instruction and assessments, connecting to high-quality diverse sources, accessible to a range of learners with Schoology and other aspects, provide instructional support and continuous professional development for our teachers. While no one resource can comprise an entire curriculum, we do really feel confident in the recommendations we're making. We're recommending the digital access for all biology and physical science, which guarantees access to all students anywhere in the world, not to mention it does lighten the backpack load for many of our students. And so we will have class sets of those textbooks for our students to use. And as a final reminder, these textbooks and resources will be available for two weeks in the old Worthington Library, Northwest Library, Worthington Park Library, and here at the Worthington Education Center, so that our parents and other community members may provide us with additional feedback. So there are feedback forms where the textbooks are. Hopefully, if parents have feedback for us, they'll fill out those forms and get that information to us. And then we will ask for final approval at our next board meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, June 10.
Excellent. I have just one question-
Yeah.
-and then I'll open it up to the board. You said we'll have class sets available?
We will, yes.
What does that comprise of, or quantity does that comprise? How many physical books does that mean?
Nikki, that's a great question. I'm not sure exactly how many.
Thirty?
Thirty.
Okay.
My guess is we may order a few more than that, just to have enough for every student in case a student would want to take one home.
Okay. I was just going to say, I assume it's our policy that essentially we have enough for the kids-
Correct.
-who actually want a tangible book. But we start with a certain-
Right.
-number, and that's what you refer to as the class sets.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I didn't have any other questions. I'll open it up to the entire board.
I'll just say thank you.
You're welcome.
You actually answered the question that I had, so-
Well, good.
About how many-
How many?
If we were going to have physical books as well.
Yes.
Just the connection to Schoology is pretty cool. As a, you know, parent, I like to have things all in one place, so that was really helpful. And the explanation of why, that was really helpful. Sorry, my voice dropped. Just the explanation of why 2019, I'm looking at Stephanie. Just, didn't you do that? You used to do, like, you used to do academic books with McGraw?
Yes.
Didn't mean to call you out.
Oh, yeah.
But just, you know, just that explanation as to why-
She's blaming you that this one was-
That's fine. I mean, it's been like fifteen years.
No pressure. But, um, yeah, so you answered all the questions. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Information. Sorry, Stephanie.
Oh, you're fine. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. All right. That brings us to the second reading of our policy updates. Any questions or comments? I mean, they're the same. I don't think that anything has changed since we had our first reading.
Were there any, there were no public comments or any questions about them?
Nothing presented.
I didn't see anything come through.
No. No. Okay. All right. Mr. Cusick, that brings us to our five-year forecast.
All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. I first want to thank all of my colleagues for moving closer tonight simply to hear the five-year forecast. I appreciate that. The, so tonight's about an update, right? But I want to first remind everyone what the purpose of a five-year forecast is. So really, it serves two very technical purposes. The biggest one is it allows us to sign multi-year agreements, so we can't sign contracts that extend beyond having positive cash balance. And it also allows our ODE and the Auditor States Office to view districts that may be heading in official caution and try to implement measures before worse things happen. But for Worthington, the very practical purpose, it really allows us to have a long-range planning tool to make decisions both on programmatic offerings and when we would need to seek voter support for additional revenue. So that's what we'll talk a little bit about here tonight. As a reminder, you know, a forecast is presented in the fall, in November, and is required to be updated in May. So in the fall, that's considered the baseline year. So if you remember, my presentation went through every line. I will not bore you with all of that tonight, but the May version is simply to provide an update. So I'm going to focus on what changed from the fall. I assure you, if you want to come back in next fall, I will go line by line through all of that once again. But I do want to bring up one key point that I stress every time. On the revenue side, as you can see on the chart on the left, eighty percent of our revenue comes from local taxpayers. So we are predominantly a locally funded school district. Roughly twenty percent comes from the state, but eighty percent comes from local property taxes. And on the expense side, a very similar pie chart where almost eighty percent is salary and benefits of our staff, where a service sector employer, so the majority of our resources go toward paying our instructional and support staff. So we'll get right into it. What changed from the November forecast? Really, the answer is not much. On the revenue side, taxes went down, state funding went up, interest income went up, but in total, over five years, revenue changed around $100,000 on almost $1 billion in revenue. So really, no change there. On the expense side, in total, expenses went up 7.6 million, but the board has already approved 6.3 of that related to the purchase of the Amazon building, which we, you know, we negotiated after the fall forecast. So salary and benefits are going down slightly. Inflation is hitting us on service and supply costs, all in total, 7.6 increase in, million-dollar increase in expenses. And so we'll dive into that just real quick. So revenue, I said 6.1 million decrease. Really, that comes down to commercial property. When we met in the fall, the county, this year was a reappraisal year, in case anyone wasn't hiding under a rock. But when we met with county auditor, they indicated close to thirty, thirty-two percent on the commercial side, and ended up coming in in the neighborhood of twenty percent. So that decreases our revenue slightly. And we also saw some reclassification of commercial property to residential property, and that decreased it. So all in, over five years, it's about a million and a half dollars a year decrease, total of 6.1 million less than we projected. Interest revenue is up. We've continued to see higher interest rates than we, most experts have thought. So on the good side, our interest revenue is higher. And then corresponding to taxes and valuation being slightly lower, state funding is up. Remember now, we have a working formula right now, which is driven by property wealth. And so if our, if our commercial property came in slightly under where we thought it would be, then that ends up adding dollars to state funding. We also had in there a half a million dollars of reimbursement for ELA materials. That was larger than most of us thought. So all in, a $3.8 million increase helps offset the decrease in taxes. Remember, just, you know, I mentioned this, but we, since we do have a working formula, so, you know, the state comes up with what they calculate as a per pupil amount to educate a child. In the last biennium, 2223, that was $7,200. If you recall, we made a lot of effort to increase the inputs. We talked about increasing the inputs, indexing them for inflation. So the base cost per people went up to $8,000, almost $8,100 in this biennium, but you subtract the local capacity. Local capacity means property wealth, so what the school district taxpayers are required to put toward that $8,100. And you see a similar pattern in the last biennium as what I project in this biennium. When reappraisal, the formula uses a three-year average of property values. And so as that reappraisal starts to work its way through the formula, then our local capacity goes up and our state funding goes down. So in '24, this year, our local capacity was a little over $6,000, meaning we got close to $2,000 per student. With that reappraisal kicks in, our capacity is projected to go up to $6,500, which is a decrease of about $400 per student. So as you can imagine, being the fourteenth-largest school district, over 10,000 students, a decrease of $400 is significant, and that's why you see our state funding go down. We'll talk about this later, but one of the risks is, I assume that in the next biennium, '2627, they will again continue to index those base costs for inflation. If they don't, and this reappraisal continues to work its way through, we would actually get less funding in the next biennium than we got this year. So that's a significant risk to us. But that is pretty much, in a nutshell, how state funding works in Ohio. On the expenditure side, salary and benefits decrease almost $1 million. So we're projecting eight more FTE over the five-year period due to enrollment bubble that's working its way through our middle schools. So as it works its way through, we have added a couple staff a year toward that, but that's offset by savings from retirement. We have close to, I think, seventeen or eighteen retirements this year. We usually project seven or eight. And so we save typically close to $50,000 per retirement when you replace those with entry-level teachers. So that savings from retirements more than offsets the additional staff that we have in the short term. On the service and supplies, the discretionary-type budget, we have a $2.2 million increase. We've seen, you know, I talked about interest earnings being higher. In reality, we prefer lower interest rates because of the negative impact it has on expenses for us. We're predominantly paying for services that are increasing fast, and we're seeing that in, really, we're seeing that in our tuition that we pay for students placed in specialized programs and transportation, seeing some pretty significant increases. And then, as I mentioned lastly, capital outlay. This is mainly the Amazon Bush Boulevard building, the Jeff Ebley Memorial Building. That was approved by the board earlier. I'm trying for you. So that's 6.3 million. Hopefully, we will close soon if all things go well, but that was already in the budget. We're just now adding it to the forecast. So the bottom line, what does this mean? So we typically extend this out ten years. So the dotted line you see is the five-year forecast, but we really look in a ten-year position because it's important that we look at those two main lines there, surplus deficit, that's how much money we're spending over what we're taking in, not only at our cash balance, the bottom line. Because if you, if you wait too long to adjust your expenses or your revenue, then your second levy becomes insurmountable. So you're always taking a long-term view. We've always had a motto of reasonable levies at reasonable intervals. But what we see here is that we're in good financial shape in the five years, right? We start deficit spending in 2027, so our revenues are short, 2.7 million. That's circled in red, but we have the cash balance of able to handle that. Our cash balance doesn't go negative until fiscal '31. And so as we look at those two lines, those are the two lines we want to monitor. So what I, I told you today, it didn't change much from the, from the prior forecast. I went back and I looked at what changed since we passed our operating levy in 2022. How are we doing? We're halfway through what we thought would be a levy cycle of four years, so we're halfway through that to 2024. And really, what, what changed is on the revenue side. Higher reappraisal adds a couple million dollars a year in revenue. Our higher state funding adds a couple million dollars if it continues, and interest rates are higher. And so that really adds about $10 million a year in revenue. Our expenses, the second set of numbers here, are about the same, with the exception of the current year because of the building purchase, but we're pretty much in line with where we thought we'd be. But what that has effectively done is when we were on the ballot in '22, we projected deficit spending in '25. So we saw that 3.9 million deficit spending now moves ahead two years. We now project deficit spending in '27. Okay? So we see positive cash flow two years longer than we thought we'd have when we passed the levy. So the obvious question then is, can we delay the levy longer than 2026 as we anticipated? And again, we have to look at both the spending line and the cash balance line. And what I did for sake of argument here is I modeled in an incremental levy in '28 and '34, or '32, sorry, that's typo, in '28 and '32. And this shows that we would be short in the second set of, in the second levy, slightly by a million, four, nineteen million. Over ten years, I'm comfortable saying that I think that's a manageable position to work toward. So I believe if the assumptions in the forecast hold true, that we could stretch this levy longer than 2026 and still leave ourselves in a decent position, in a manageable position in 2032, if that makes sense. However, there are risks to the forecast. We're making assumptions about the future. One of the biggest things is inflation. Inflation has stuck around longer than we, anyone had thought, and that puts pressure on various aspects of the assumptions here. Number one, it puts pressure on property values. We went, we just went through reappraisal. Ohio has an update in three years, so 2026 will be a reappraisal update. Most believe that it won't be as high as we just saw. Updates usually aren't. But county auditors were faulted this past reappraisal for saying the last update was too low, and so it caused a higher escalation immediately than if they would have made the update higher. So we're assuming ten to twelve percent in this forecast. It's likely, in my opinion, likely to be higher. But on the downside, that makes, with interest rates the way they are, that makes housing turnover tougher, right? Not as much inventory on the market. People can't afford to move if they have a good interest rate on their loan, and so that it may impact enrollment. And it also may impact state funding, as we just went through, depending on how our property values turn out. That has a direct impact now on a working formula. Also, labor, the labor market continues to be tight. Our negotiated agreements are through 2026. I have two, 2.75 percent in the out years, but if the cost of labor doesn't come down, there could be pressure on that as well. And then lastly, the state budget. We talked about how it's, how it's calculated now, but one of the big things that's being talked about is a complete elimination of the state income tax. And if that gets pushed through, that's about a quarter of the entire state budget. So that's about $11 billion over a $40 billion budget. And so the indirect impact to us would be less, less funds available to fully fund the funding formula. And so that, that puts pressure on, we really need to see in the next biennium, this funding formula pushed through to get it fully operational and continue to index the inputs, because if you're indexing in property values that are making us responsible to pay more of the state share, but you're not indexing the actual input, then that's a, that formula gets out of line real quick. that's a, that formula gets out of line real quick. Um, voucher expansion also, uh, plays into that with the total, the total budget that the state has to work with. The more, uh, that's devoted to voucher expansion, the less likely, or the more pressure it will have on traditional school funding. And then you also see, uh, budget commissions, uh, being discussed as a way to curtail, um, local levies. So budget commissions review, county budget commissions review, what voters approve every year, uh, and there's some discussion at the State House on giving them more authority to, uh, effectively reduce the amount that local governments can collect. Uh, so we'll see what comes out of that. What I would say is the biggest impact on, on Worthington's future financially, uh, is a shift in tax burden. So we've seen, as I mentioned, the state income tax, as you see on this chart, um, really for twenty years, was a progressive structure that went all the way up to seven-and-a-half percent on earners above two-hundred thousand. Uh, this year, that is, um, less than half, right? So many people are paying no tax, but our highest earners are only paying three-and-a-half percent. That's good for everybody that's working, but the indirect impact of that is the chart on the right, where this shift in tax burden, so class-one real is code for residential property. So you see residential property, while these tax rates were in effect, paid about forty-six percent of, of the total tax burden, while commercial property paid close to fifty-four percent. Fast forward to today, and that has gone from two-thirds of all property taxes are paid from residential homeowners, and only one-third is paid from commercial. So you see this, this dual shift of, uh, reduction in high-income earners and also reduction in commercial property taxes, um, moving on to the backs of residential property owners. And so as we saw that play out, uh, this May, when, or this March, when eighteen percent of school levies passed, it is going to be difficult, uh, to pass levies in the future. Uh, and then lastly, uh, I was asked to look into whether we, um, could remove our instructional fees, what financial impact that would have. So when we say instructional fees, these are the class fees, anywhere from twenty-four to sixty-five dollars at the high school. Um, Ohio revised code allows us to charge families a fee to offset what they consume in the classroom. So in kindergarten, think of markers, crayons, paper, uh, all the way up to high school, think of lab materials, paper, things like that. Uh, many districts around us have moved to eliminate those as part of free and public education. For us, that's anywhere from three-hundred to four-hundred thousand a year. Uh, and so on two-hundred million, it doesn't really move the needle. So if you look at this graph compared to, um, the graph that I showed earlier, we still deficit spend the same year in twenty-seven. We still go negative the same year in thirty-one. So I would say that that doesn't, uh, impact us, um, materially either way. Uh, and with that, I will turn it over for any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone like to start? Thanks, Jennifer.
Um, TJ, one of the things that we've discussed, and I know you discussed with the Tac Committee, was delaying to twenty-twenty-eight. I think I've heard a lot from the community that they would appreciate that. How was the advisory committee discussion on that?
I think, um, with reappraisal, um, overwhelmingly, it was, uh, to try to delay if you can, right? So the, the, the thing about incremental levies is we collect a little bit each year, and we try to time it to offset with when we need the revenue. And when positive things happen, then it makes sense to wait longer. One of the things they really wanted to look at, though, is does that impact us in the next levy cycle? As I said, we have the, we have the funds available now to, to do that, um, but we just don't want to put ourselves in a position in six years where we would bankrupt the district. Uh, and I think as the modeling shows, um, it, it doesn't do that. The incremental levy approach is still valid, although we don't have to continue the incremental approach, but I think our community, uh, appreciates it at this time. And so I think by and large, as long as it didn't put us in a bad position, they were in favor of that. Now, I will say, you know, I threw out twenty-eight for very, uh, reasons. Um, I think it's important that, to note that a lot can happen between now and twenty-six, right? So I'm, you know, I don't think we can say for definitively that we're off the ballot until twenty-eight, but I think, given these projections, if things pan out reasonably close to how we project, then I think it makes sense to delay longer than twenty-sixth, likely twenty-eight.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Excellent. Stephanie, anything on your end?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions. I said, oh, I had the, the benefit of going to Tac as well, so. Great, seen it a couple times.
Okay. Um, when we're going through, and so maybe I'll go back to you for just a second, Jennifer, can everyone just comment on their comfort level with removal of instructional fees so that when we, the next, um, is it in June? When it, yeah, so that we, when we have our June agenda and those types of fees along with others, um, are on the agenda, if we could just align now that we won't have those, we will, we will choose to remove them for the upcoming academic year, I think that would just be good. So if you have a, if you have a position on that, maybe we'll share that as we go along.
I'm okay with that. I will not be here June tenth, which is probably when you'll vote on it.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Thanks for letting us know, anyway. Yeah.
Um, I'm okay with it, and I also think it's the right thing to do, so fully support it.
Excellent. Thanks, Stephanie.
Uh, yeah, I essentially believe that public schools should be as free as possible, so I would be in support of that.
Okay. Any questions or comments for TJ on the five-year forecast?
I did have one thing, and I, I don't know if this came, I was going back through my notes to try and find, the Legislative Reform Committee that they created down there, are you following that closely?
Yeah, so, um, I, I sent in testimony, uh, this week on that. You know, the, I think, in a nutshell, I think what they've learned is that most, most any, most anything is going to require constitutional amendment because of the way Ohio property tax laws work, um, which isn't, you know, it isn't out of the question, but it's much, much more difficult. So, um, what I think, you know, I think if budget commission discussion comes out of that, I think more districts may move toward incremental levies to try to get growth. You know, the study came out that if we didn't have House Bill nine-twenty, and we allowed property tax growth, essentially, we, we would be in the same position financially as we would have been, but there were a lot more levies and time and effort that have taken place in those years. Uh, but again, that, that would require constitutional amendment. Some of the circuit breaker talk, they, they can adjust the homestead and rollback exemptions. Um, one of the things, so what I testified about was, um, you know, that at the very beginning, I will applaud the committee because they, they looked holistically at this whole thing and, and compared us to other states, but one of the things that came up was the fact that Ohio doesn't devote as much resources to building school facilities, uh, as some other states. Um, even though we have a robust Ohio School Facilities Commission, uh, as you all know, we're, we've been waiting in line for, for a long time. Uh, and so I just simply said, as a means to, uh, reduce property taxes, that the state devoted more money toward school facility construction and opened up availability of resources, um, to districts like us that would create jobs, would maintain economics, and it would reduce property taxes. And so, um, I, I, I don't know what's going to come out of that. They, they have their last hearing, I think, next week, uh, and then they're tasked with making a recommendation prior to December first, so.
I was wondering about that timeline. I knew they were winding down a little bit.
So we'll see. I think that, so House Bill one was like a, a huge mega-bomb that, um, rattled everybody. They realized that that was unconstitutional, so rightly, they tabled it and sent it to committee, and I think the committee now is understanding the rules of change. Uh, so that's a good thing.
Um, I think I have one more question, but I can't recall what it was. It'll come to me. Go ahead, Kelly. Sorry.
That has never happened to me. I've never lost a thought. Um, I'm definitely looking forward to the fall when you go through this line by line. Um, I just, I always find your information helpful, so I am grateful that you have an advisory committee that you get feedback from. I know in key communicators, we got a little bit of feedback about levy cycle and, um, the request to delay as, as much as we can. So that is always good feedback to hear. Um, and just, you know, looking at the numbers don't lie. Um, so it's really helpful in, in answer to your question. Absolutely. I'm okay with, uh, removing instructional fees.
Excellent. I assumed as much, but I figured our community need to hear from each of us that we're all in support of that, so. Did you remember what it was?
Actually, did.
All right.
I, I remembered it the second you started talking, because that's how it always works. Um, the reserves, I know that that's something else that we hear a lot about in the community, and how does that play into the overall forecast as we're going forward?
Yeah, so if we, um, you know, we're managing, we're managing our, our, our planning based on not only deficit spending, but this unreserved balance, right? So, so as this chart shows, we have a cash balance, but then we have a budget reserve. Um, our board policy is, is, is two months, fifty, so essentially fifteen percent. That's the G F O A, the Government Finance Officer's minimum suggestion. Um, and so, uh, you know, as a district that has, uh, predominant revenue from property taxes that are stable, our folks pay their property taxes online, on time, um, then it makes sense for us to be at the minimum level, I believe. And so, um, that line there, we take that off, and so we're managing to that unreserved fund balance. So even though you see, like in this case, six-point-eight million unreserved balance, we still have thirty-eight million in reserve, so we're not at the end of our rope, uh, in case something bad should happen. Uh, but we do want to maintain that reserve balance right around fifteen percent. So this shows that going down, and if you went back to, um, um, here, when I thought we could do an incremental in twenty-eight and thirty-two, that unreserved balance goes all the way down and actually is negative. So, so it'll get tight if we delay. Um, it'll get real tight if we delay and fail, uh, make no mistake. But we are managing that, um, that unreserved balance down.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, I don't think I really have any questions. I think that, um, I'm glad to hear that we're in the position where we, while we cannot say anything definitively, but we can at least communicate that we're, we'll manage to, um, attempt to stay off of the ballot to twenty-twenty-eight, which I think is very favorable for our community. And I will just have to say, I'm, I, I too am delighted that we are all in alignment on the removal of instructional fees. I would be remiss if I didn't give a nod to our former board member, Charlie Wilson, who for the entire time that I was on, I've been on the board, voted against instructional fees. And so while he is not a part of the board to vote that we are removing them, or it doesn't really require a vote, I'm sure he'll be very pleased that we are all unanimously, um, agreeing that, um, we want to do all things we can, um, to remove those burdens, and that will be a good thing for our community as well. Any remaining questions or comments? I know sometimes they pop up as we're other, our colleagues speak. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, TJ. All right, um, this brings us to, one more action, actually, from you on new business related to the library budget. Oh, I, I moved ahead, sorry. I moved all the way, I, I saw a five-year forecast, and I just moved all the way ahead. Okay. Let's instead... Thank you. Move back up here. So, Dr. Bowers.
Thank you.
Skipped right over your report. I apologize.
It's always hard to file, follow TJ in the five-year forecast, but we will attempt to do so. Riveting. All right, so our mission in Worthington Schools is to empower a community of learners. We work to do that through four vision statements, so, um, we work this, um, report through those statements. So we will engage each student with diverse opportunities to maximize every student's potential. Margot did a good job of talking about that earlier, although has just stepped out. Um, guys, it has been an outstanding school year in Worthington. Our official last day of school is seven days away. That's Wednesday, May twenty-second. At the high school level, that's four days of class and a lot of catch-up here to do, and then, um, three days of finals next week. Graduation for the class of twenty-twenty-four will be held Sunday, May twenty-sixth, at the Columbus Convention Center, so we're super excited about that. Um, but before we meet for another board meeting, our summer school program will begin on Monday, June third, so we're already making that transition. We expect roughly sixteen-hundred students to attend summer learning, um, during the month of June in our summer school program. So excited about that. Our second vision statements will provide a safe environment where every student can grow intellectually, emotionally, socially, and physically. So talking about safety in conjunction with the Worthington Education Association, um, we've evaluated and are piloting a system called Syntegix. Um, this system is designed to alert safety services to exact locations in the school to save critical time and also designed to empower our teachers to make those decisions. So this crisis alert system is a wearable panic button for, for all of our staff, um, that empowers all of our teachers and staff to get help anywhere on campus with the push of a button. So our current plan is to pilot this system at Brookside Worthington Estates and the Perry Phoenix Worthington Academy Campus, um, for the start of next school year, before we determine if district-wide implementation makes sense. Um, I bring that up because installation at the pilot schools begins this week, so the actual installation of the system is beginning. Um, we will provide a consist, we, our third vision statements, we will provide consistent communication and promote dialogue with our community. So this week, or hopefully last week, um, all Worthington residents should have received a report, um, from around our Worthington Schools facilities titled "A Deeper Look." Um, this mailer was designed to provide an overview of our facility's history and our current master facilities planning journey. That's also available on our Worthington Schools website, so we're hopeful that, um, people in our community just take a look at where we've been and where we are and where we hope to go in the future. We think that was, um, an excellent report. Additionally, um, Thomas Worthington families should expect communication from Principal Scully later this week regarding the start of the twenty-twenty-four school year, so lots of conversation about that. Um, I appreciate the team of teachers, parents, and students who met to provide feedback on a course of action, and again, all families at Thomas Worthington will receive that, um, in their mailboxes, uh, well, in their email mailboxes. So, they'll get an email. Um, and then finally, Rob Messenheimer, uh, will be working to communicate with kindergarten families in the next couple of weeks, um, on our plan, um, for kindergarten for next year. We've been talking about how we deal with some low half-day enrollment at, at specific schools, and Rob's been working hard, and we, we communicated with half-day families a couple of months ago about the, you know, the need for growth of numbers and, and what we might do. We promised we would communicate by the end of the school year, and so again, we're at that point, so that communication's coming soon. And then finally, our fourth vision statements, we're responsible and transparent with our community's resources. Obviously, you just heard the five-year forecast. So revenue is above projections, and we've worked diligently to maximize human capital in order to keep personnel expenses within projections. So by doing that, this should allow us to stretch the community's tax dollars longer, longer than we had previously projected without reducing services to students, and so that's good news. So that's our report.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers. I don't have any questions or comments. Anyone else? Excellent. Mr. Kusak, would you like to share your report?
Uh, I don't have anything else to report, uh, tonight, other than I got to speak.
Just the five-year forecast.
Other than I get to speak at the, uh, Thomas Economics class this week, I, um, I asked them, uh, they seemed excited about their building, uh, when, when I told them we were the fourteenth-largest district in the state, they, they found that to be, um, mesmerizing. I think that's a testament to, uh, you know, our small feel, our small elementary buildings. Um, everybody seems to be nicely in their bubbles. Um, when you add up all the bubbles, it does get to be a large bubble. But they were excited about, uh, about the building project. There were a couple swimmers in there that were juniors, and unfortunately, they, when they asked me when it would open, uh, they just missed the cutoff, but, uh, but overall, they seem very excited about the project.
Excellent. Are you, will you share with the group, um, what you shared with me, the begin, before the meeting?
I did, so I, uh, I went in there and I, I said, um, you know, I talked about a little bit who I am, and, uh, I said, so how much does the building, how much do you think the building out front is costing? And, uh, quiet, one million dollars, go higher, two million dollars, and they were totally blown away, one-hundred-and-seventeen million.
Clearly, none of, none of them are in the housing market, right? Like, if you think about, like, what if, yes.
But it was good.
That's excellent. Thanks for sharing. All right, that brings us to board committee reports and announcements. Kelly, do you want to start? You don't have to.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm happy to start. I just got to find my, I always think of Jennifer when I'm pulling out my notes. She's like, I have mine written down, and Kelly has this, because if not, it would be not in order. Anyway, so, um, I'm going to try to keep this brief. I know we've been here for a little while, and we have executive session this evening, but, um, key communicators, Amber and I participated in external and internal key communicators. Um, Trent covered a lot of what we talked about in, um, key communicators. Always a good group to have, so I was the last key communicators of the year, so looking forward to that one next time. I went to two conferences since we've been together last, and I really do think that they're, my overall review and feedback is best for like a work session or a retreat, so I'm not going to go into super amazing details. Right now, I can't... Right now, I can share slides with you from, um, uh, Board Leadership. Um, we've got a lot of slides for that. So if you wanna, if anything I talk about and you wanna see slides for that, and then I'm waiting, still waiting for the Ohio Alliance of Black School Educators slides to come through, um, and I can also share those with you as well. But just be, so I went to the Ohio Alliance of Black School Educators. They had a board, uh, member seminar. It was a one-day event, um, held, um, at Polaris. And then I went back to Polaris the next week, um, for a two-day, for, um, OSBA's Board Leadership Institute. Overall, a lot of what the presentations talked about were goals, board goals in addition to district goals. So a lot of tying back, how are you tying back what you're doing as a board to your goals that you create as a district? Well, and I, I, I don't know why I bring it to all of you, but I, because we're gonna talk about that soon. Um, and so just thinking about that, you know, as we, as we think about how we're functioning as a board, I know we had a retreat earlier this year, but just still trying to like noodle that around as to what that looks like for us as a board as we move forward. So, you know, we talked about, they talked about, um, having a board code, um, a lot of defining what we do as a board that will have an impact on academic achievement and student achievement. Um, and just having a direction that aligns with your district plan, which we'll talk about in June, and ensuring that we have shared leadership. And just bringing the, bringing it back. So as you're having conversations, you're talking about making decisions about school fees. Why are we tying that back to students? Or how are we tying that back to what our purpose is as a board, right? And what we are looking at. Um, so that was a, an overarching theme from both conferences that I found. Um, so then, uh, Ohio Alliance for Black School Educators, we talked a lot about stakeholder engagement and community engagement. They gave a couple of examples, having office hours. Some boards have office hours prior to their board meetings. Um, they have quarterly town halls. There's one district that has a Facebook Live every, after every board meeting to kind of give an overview about what happened at the meeting, talk about any questions that are arising in the district in general, just very high level, um, and try to answer any questions that maybe, um, community members might have. So that was another suggestion. One suggestion I did find was very interesting. This was from Akron, so a larger school di, slight, I don't know, we're fourteenth, so maybe just slightly larger school district, um, having an assigned area for each board member. So you would have three schools, you would have three schools, I'm just throwing out numbers. Um, and that, that particular board member would concentrate on that area of the district and those schools of the district. Just, I just had never heard of that before. So I just thought that that was interesting. Another theme of that seminar was assessing what you're doing, assessing decisions. How did it go? What were the highs and what were the lows? And where do you need to shift? What things do you need to add? What things maybe do you need to do differently? Um, so that was a good portion to that seminar. And like I said, I can go into details later, but like this meeting is just, it's better for a work session. For Leadership Institute, I went to two sessions on generative AI. So now I'm an expert. Um, just, you know, it's, it's here, and so just look, I'm trying to learn a lot. But I found both of them to be very informative. One was just a, just a general overview of the difference between predictive AI, which we use GPS, spell check, Grammarly, um, and generative AI, which is ChatGPT and all the other ones that they listed. Um, some are free, they're supposed to be for eighteen and over, most of them, I think, I think all of them. Okay, thank you. All of them, um, now I will say, fourteenth-largest school district, you were saying TJ. So this district that presented the general overview was an extremely small district. So a lot of the things that they were talking about, you kind of have to put in perspective of whether we will be able to do something like that here in Worthington. But they use them for IEPs even, um, responsibly. So one thing that they said over and over is check the output. You can't just copy paste. This is not replacing things, this is enhancing, um, to make your systems better. But lessons plant, lesson planning, IEPs, obviously when, without adding any identifying information, as well as communication, emails, newsletters, phone scripts. So they, they gave a very general overview about how they're utilizing generative AI. I'm trying to make sure I don't just say AI. Generative AI in their district. Um, and then policy was the other session that I went to, and they were talking about AI as far as policy. And just as a district, you need to understand what it is, understanding the landscape, then you need to know what your, um, values are. Um, just very high level, what are your values and your goals? And then you turn those into principles, which are more actionable steps that you would take. And then you talk about diving into policy. So she, like, really concentrated on the fact that you really have to get a grasp on who you are and what generative AI is and what that means to us before developing any type of policy. Um, so we talked about that. That was a session. Talked about lead goal, um, finance. I went to a finance session, which was really helpful. Um, again, it was a very small district and just things that they do in very small districts, not very small. I mean, there are valuables to you, right? But it's just, it's hard to compare sometimes the information that you get in those presentations and making sure we can apply them here in Worthington. But, um, this treasurer talked, he wasn't as amazing as TJ, but he did talk about the different buckets, aside from the general budget. So you have all these different buckets that we also budget for. And, um, so that was just a good overview to listen to, because we always concentrate on the general budget, which is great, um, but there are additional things to look at as well. I will go back real quick to legal and just tell you what they talked about. Um, because they had some key points that they wanted to make sure that people are, boards were aware of, and that's the, just a reminder about Open Meetings Act, which I didn't take away anything that I felt like I, that we weren't already doing that I needed to share. Fraud reporting requirements, House Bill sixty-eight, which is not in effect yet, and how that could impact licensed employees who are employed by the district, um, and carrying out key functions. So just looking at policy and working with legal with that, but again, not in effect. Some federal updates, some Title IX regulations that, guidelines that, um, have come through, and also working with legal and looking at your policies for that. Social media, I know some of us have some social media accounts. Again, nothing I really pulled out that I felt was really, that applied to us as much. Um, blocking people, deleting comments, I don't know that we have that. And then just having an awareness about political activity resources when you have, when you're talking about employees. Then they give a long legislative update, which I'm not even gonna attempt to go over this evening, but I will send you the slide for that. But just robust, the only thing I will point out is that, um, they did mention that at the time, which I think maybe it's filled now, but the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee chair was vacant. And so a lot of the questions that people have, or questions that they have even, um, were going unanswered because they didn't have a key person to go to. It might be filled, I'm hearing that rumor. Okay. Those are my conferences. Thank you for your patience. I also got to participate with Worthington Hills PTA. They had a book club with New Kid by Jerry Craft. And, uh, we had two sessions where we got together with community members, um, and individuals from Westerville, We Rise in Westerville. Um, but the third meeting, we got to Zoom with Jerry Craft live, which was really cool. Um, he talked about graphic novels and he compared it to like Facebook versus X, Twitter, whatever you call it. Um, and just how the language is so robust. Like, people think, oh, it's comic books, like, it's not a big deal, but you really have to be intentional about your wording because you only have so much space. And the illustrations are just so profound in that, because this says all the words you need. Or like a sad face may say, you know, something else. And so, um, just paying attention to detail and just how important graphic novels are. So it was just really, um, interesting to hear. He gave advice to students about write what you love and finish what you write, and it should be fun. Um, so that was just a really neat experience, um, with that PTA group, and, um, that was great. Went to the WEA retirement event. I listened, I attended a public education panel, which I'll let Stephanie talk about. Um, Trent's community coffee was really good. We had a few community members stop by, um, so we had a good conversation. That was also the last coffee of the season. And then the Lions Club recognition, which I listened to. So, I know that was a lot, I, sorry.
No need to apologize, no need to apologize. Um, it might, and we've talked about this at times, and I think sometimes we've put it on the Google Drive, but, um, uploading slides from presentations that we feel like are valuable and just sharing them out to the board, I think that way is probably just a good way to have those resources available for everyone.
Absolutely. So I will say, just a plug to Jeff Collin over here, that his last techno, not his last technology update, but one before that gave a breakdown about Google Drives that I was like, this is exactly what I need. So I will look at that and put those drives in there and kind of let you guys know where they are.
That's excellent. Yeah, we could probably even just have one for, um, um, just for, uh, for, um, what am I trying to say? Yeah, it, board resources or even, even, um, the, um, what am I trying to say? Ohio Board of Education, the O, um, OSBA. Yeah, I just could not, that acronym could not come off my, out of my mouth. Um, we could, yeah, we could have even an OSBA-specific one, and then we could think about other ones from there. But it seems like, you know, that's a majority of where we attend our conferences, not all, but some. So, but yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for sharing. Would you like to go next, Amber?
Um, well, it's May, so like Kelly's was very long. It's a very, very busy, busy time for, um, everybody, it seems like. Um, my, the last couple of weeks, I also attended key communicators, internal and external. We had the TAC meeting. Um, we had the WEA Retirement Recognition Ceremony, um, which was just incredible to see all those educators who, you know, at the end of their career and celebrating those major milestones. That was a, that was an important event. Um, I, yes, I stopped by Trent's coffee chat. Uh, McCord had their Evening of Excellence. That was the first time I think that school had had that event. So that was, uh, really a good celebration of the students who'd worked really, really hard. Um, the band over at Worthington Kilborn has been putting on Bingo. Um, I don't know if any of you have attended these yet, but it is huge. It's this huge event and it is professionally run. They all had to go to Bingo School in order to do it. This is a real thing. Um, but I think this was maybe the fourth or fifth one, and it just seems like this is the second one I've been to. They keep getting bigger. So it just takes up the entire cafeteria at, uh, Worthington Kilborn. So I don't know when the next one is, I think that was the last one for the school year. Uh, but it's a great fundraiser for the band, uh, and it takes, I don't know how much money to run that program, so. And it's a lot of fun, uh, you get to see a bunch of people. Um, I also have been, attended, uh, there's, uh, there's a farmer who, there was a story in the Dispatch about this. Some of you might have read it about some, um, dumping that's happening on the land that is adjacent to Worthington Hills. So there's a lot of Worthington Hills community members who are upset about this. And so, uh, there was a Sharon Township trustee meeting and also Perry Township discussion about this. So I went to the Sharon Township one. Um, I can forward the Dispatch article to all of you. I think that does a good summary, probably a much better summary of what's going on than what I could do. But, um, the main thing that I wanted to talk to you all about is I attended the OSBA Legislative Conference, uh, since last time we spoke, and the governor was there. The big thing that he talked about was, and this was before the bill passed that I forwarded to you all about cell phones. Um, and it was just kind of a, a shortened version of his State of the State address, but he, you know, was just adamant that school districts need to do something about cell phones in schools. And since that time, they've passed a bill that's on the way to his desk, which I'm sure he's going to sign. And so what that bill entails is that sometime, um, from signage to July first, school districts have the, uh, responsibility to enact some type of a policy. And I guess they're going to have some type of a model policy that they, um, that we can duplicate. But I know that you're already on top of this, Nikki, and it's going to the Policy Committee, but just for the public to be aware, um, that this is something that, you know, is happening at the state level, and it's definitely something that we're, um, focused on here in, uh, the local level. The Legislative Conference, that was the big thing the governor said. He also, I mentioned this to Trent about, um, he thought that it would be good for school districts to have some type of a partnership with like an optometrist in town, that you could have free eye exams for students, because this is something that he thought, um, needed to be addressed. Uh, because, I mean, for instance, I just, you know, this is just happens to hap, be happening at the same time. Uh, but my oldest daughter, I took her because she was having trouble seeing the board. Now she needs glasses and has been farsighted, apparently, uh, and I was not aware. And she's sixteen years old, so anyways, this was something the governor, I'm not connecting these two and saying that we should do that. I'm just saying that that was something he mentioned in his remarks. They went through a lot of bills that, you know, they're, um, focused on. Uh, the capital budget, uh, is due on June thirtieth, which, um, sometimes that happens, sometimes that deadline doesn't happen, but that's the deadline. Um, the Senate leadership, they said, is optimistic to have a compromise by Memorial Day. And some of the other bills they talked about, you know, there's a Religious Expression Days. It's Senate Bill forty-nine, um, if you wanna just kind of keep tabs on that one. It expands the, um, religious exemptions that students can, uh, students and staff, I think, can have for excused absences. There's the bill that, um, one of the, you know, criticisms from public school advocates is that the vouchers are going to schools that don't have any transparency or accountability. And so there is a bill, um, that's sponsored by, uh, Bill Seitz, who is a very powerful, um, member of the Majority Caucus in the House. And, um, that bill would, you know, require some transparency and accountability. And I'm trying to find the bill number here. It's House Bill, is it four oh seven? Um, I can get it to you all, but I think that's, I mean, the bill's got a long way to go, but it, you know, it would address, it would address some of those, you know, very real concerns. So, um, yeah, it was a good conference. It was just a half-day, but it was just kind of, you know, just tons of information. I ended up sitting at a table with a bunch of TJ Cusick fans. I told them I, uh, was from Worthington and they all started like, they got really excited. And apparently it was a full table of treasures. I don't know how I sat down, the full table of treasures, but every one of them knew you and just were singing. No, there were like ten, and they were all singing your praises. Um, but it was a good, it was a really good, um, day and a really good discussion. So I'm, you know, if we create some type of a drive, like I'm looking, one of the PowerPoints here, I'm happy to share some of these resources with you all. And I mentioned it too in email, but if you have any feedback on the legislative platform for OSBA, that deadline is May thirty-first. I think Jennifer was the only one that told me she didn't, so. I'll assume if I don't hear from you, you don't have any feedback.
Yeah, but thanks for that reminder.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I should have asked both of you, um, any, anything else from key communicators that we should be aware of? I mean, obviously, we, we heard back that it was favorable to the extent that we can push it out to twenty-eight, but anything else that came up at that meeting? No?
Talked about naming rights and fundraising. Um, the consultant said that we need new sta, more staff for that effort, which that's something I think, you know, as we talk about pushing the levy off and some of the other financial, um, projections we can make. I think that's a, an important component of it. Um, so, anyway, but yeah, I think, I think Superintendent Bowers went through most of this tonight.
Okay. And just note on the cellphone policy, it's not, I feel like we can actually start looking at it at our next Policy Committee meeting. Um, we don't have to adopt it until July of twenty-five, actually.
Oh, is it twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, Kelly kindly pointed that out, but that, there's no reason why we can't, you know, look at it in between now and then and get a jumpstart on it.
Okay, that's a good idea.
But it just gives us a little bit of breathing room. Yeah. Would you like to go now, Stephanie?
Sure. Um, I also went to TAC.
Sure. Um, I also went to TAC. I will just echo, um, it was a really good conversation around waiting or not waiting and, and what that might mean, and what if there's a disaster, not a disaster, but you know what I mean? Um, what happens if we get to '27 and something happens? And so, um, ag, agree the, the appetite is to wait. I just, just to echo that, like, there was some really thoughtful conversation and, and that came out of that. So, that was good. Um, so I also went to the OSBA Leadership Institute. I'm just going to highlight, um, two sessions. Um, I went to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Priority and Update Session. Don't get excited. Um, it was really good for, I think, for me to listen to some of the things that they talked about just from a structural standpoint, right? Because they've changed kind of how the State Board of Ed works, but then at the same time created, um, a, uh, I mean, mirrored the structure of the rest of the state departments, right? Which, that is a connection that I had not made. Many of you have probably made that connection, but now that it mirrors that structure, it's helpful just as we think through kind of how things come down from the state level that aren't coming from the legislature, um, and how we interact with those people as well. Um, and then they focused a lot on kind of what their priorities are for the coming years, which we know a lot about, right? Obviously, the science of reading is huge. Um, they did go into a little bit of detail, and I'll share the slides, just kind of the rollout plan, which I'm sure everybody that has to roll it out is very familiar with. Um, but I hadn't seen just kind of that step-by-step process. So, um, so that was interesting for me, and, and I'll share that with you guys, because I'm sure it would be helpful to look at that timeline. Um, there are a couple of schools in the room that have already adopted this program that were singing its praises. I'm not sure if they were plants, but they were very, very happy about it. Um, so, you know, that's encouraging. There was a little bit of a ti, of tension in the room just in general, because it's a hard thing, as we all know, to both purchase and roll out new curriculum. So, um, so that was not lost on the audience as well. But, um, but that was, that was good, so I will share those slides. And then, um, the session that I really want to kind of dig into that, um, I thought was just fascinating, um, was Empowering Diverse School and Home Connections: Strategies for Intentional Parent and Family Engagement. I think it feels like we were writing like research papers. Um, but that was presented by a school outside, a school district outside of Cincinnati called Princeton. And it was interesting for me, because they have a lot of parallels with our district. Um, they have multiple cities and municipalities that they have to deal with, which isn't always the case for all districts. Um, and so that adds opportunities and challenges, just like we know when, when we're dealing with our district. Um, they specifically said they have 30 square miles, which I thought was interesting. Um, I was like, we have 20, um, but we are bigger. So, um, so, so I say all that to, to, to bring up that, you know, they have some of the same things that they're trying to not just overcome, but the same opportunities that I think we have for community engagement. And so, that really, like, listening to them, I just saw a lot of parallels. Um, they have, um, a large immigrant population, uh, just, I mean, just as all districts do. And one of the really cool programs that they created was this thing called Parent Academy. Um, because if you think about parents and families coming from all over the world, there are different expectations with how you interact with school and what, what the school expects of you. And the school doesn't really understand what, what, uh, expectations you might be coming to the table with, right? Because it's a little bit different in, in, or a lot different in, in different areas, different countries. Um, and so, they, it, they create this space to have a conversation, but also talk about like, this is kind of, this is how we do it in our district, and also some of the norms in, in, in the US around just attendance and what you should feel comfortable talking to your parents, teachers about, and what that interaction looks like, and, and a million things. Um, and it's a six-week program. They have a parent liaison that leads it, and they started with one school, and they've expanded to multiple schools. But here's the super exciting part, uh, to me. Um, they, uh, have seen their parent engagement from all areas of their district go up in areas like PTAs or community coffees, which they also do, or just, you know, their engagement with just parent teacher conferences and things like that. So, as I think about, kind of back to what we talked about three weeks ago, um, about how do we kind of reach these other families and other, uh, in all across our district, like, this doesn't, this is not a panacea, right? But it's these little pieces that other, that other school districts are doing that just kind of spark ideas around, like, you know, what are we missing, or how can we do better? Um, and like I mentioned, they do coffees as well. They do it a little bit differently, because they do it at individual schools, and those individual schools have a parent-led agenda. Um, I don't know what the frequency is, um, but it's, it's a little bit more intimate, so not, and I don't think it would take the place of something like what Trent does, because it's a different, different content, different level of communication. Um, but, you know, they talked about some of the pitfalls and the things that were, um, that had gone wrong and how they built, built, um, or, or persevered through that. So, anyway, um, I just thought that that was really great. I'll share those slides as well. Um, I want to get back in contact with the district just to kind of pick their brain a little bit and understand. But, um, that was that session.
It might be, if, if I may just chime in, it might be worth, I was just trying to flip through to remind myself of the new leadership, but I'll pull it up. I have it in my notes. Um, sharing that with PTAC. And the reason being is just that I know that certain elementary schools, um, their PTAs lead new family orientations. Um, and so, it just seems like that might be an opportunity to work with our PTAs and pilot, you know, for those that already lead new family orientations, maybe there are things that they can learn from that program and potentially pilot and, and see how it does in a few schools and what resources they may need to do that. But it might just be a good starting point.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay, the other, only other update I have, um, and Kelly kind of referenced this, and I'm actually going to bounce this back to you for stuff that I missed, because I was sitting on, on the panel in, like, blinders. Um, I had the opportunity to sit on a panel, um, that was put on, uh, through Citizens Act, Citizen Action for Public Education and Public Education Partners, so a partnership there. Um, I was one of four panelists, and we were discussing, um, it, it, the, the title was "The Threat to Public Education", and a lot of it kind of fell back to the state of public education and just kind of how we're, the things, the, the pressures that we're seeing coming from different directions. Um, the panel was Dr. Antoinette Miranda, uh, who was on the State School Board, um, in her last, uh, uh, year, I think. Um, but she is also the Chair of the School of Teaching and Learning at OSU, so she kind of has two perspectives. Um, David Stewart, Superintendent of Hilliard Schools, um, and Susan Yutzi, who, um, is a librarian, has been a teacher, and is past president of Library and Media Association. And I only bring that up because it was four distinct perspectives on kind of the same idea. And so, certainly vouchers came up, um, and, and also, you know, the accountability of non-public schools or the lack of accountability and what we face when we, um, are, you know, pitted against each other, and the, just the number of vouchers that the state is seeing, um, and legislative pressures, um, certainly that we talk about all the time. Um, but it was really good to hear those four different perspectives on those same pieces, because, um, you know, as a superintendent, you see things very differently than you see maybe in the State Board of Ed. Um, and so, so it was a really good opportunity, I think, for the public to hear our perspectives, and then for us to kind of learn from each other. So, I don't know, Kelly, if you have anything else that you saw coming out of that?
I don't know if I have anything to add. I mean, I think, I think you verbalized it well. I wouldn't necessarily even say there was different perspectives, just for different viewpoints about a shared perspective that we're talking about the state of public education and coming together and how we can support students, and how we can support families, and how we can advocate for funding for public education. Um, and obviously vouchers, yes, they come up, and talking about how we could navigate that, have community engagement conversations. Um, so it was really a good panel to listen to. I, is it recorded? Was it recorded?
It is. We just, I just got the recording today, so I can share that. Excellent.
Yeah, it would be great.
Yeah.
It would be a good something for you all to listen to, and probably for me to listen to again. Um, just different viewpoints, different levels of how we engage in our school system, in our public school system. Um, yeah, it wa, it was a really good view.
And, and kind of what it means to be a public education system that has the gift, the responsibility, the honor, however you want to phrase it, of educating all students and serving all families.
Excellent. Yeah, if you'll share that, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for sharing everything at all the committee meetings, and especially the BLI, because I couldn't be there. So, it'll be great to see some of the, um, handouts from that. So, I appreciate that. I brought this so I remember Trent had talked about the facilities overview, and Vicky and team, I think you did a great job. I've gotten so many comments from community members, especially people without kids in school that aren't very connected, but they really enjoyed this and the history and the update and what's going on. So, definitely appreciate that. Um, back in April, I think we all had turns to meet, um, with the Thomas Worthington High School administrators on school opening and what's going on there, and they have all, principal and administrators have done an amazing job of working with a challenging situation, and I really, uh, that was a great update for us. Um, WEA recognition last week was amazing. I love hearing what the retired teachers are going to do and their theme of travel whenever they want to. So, that was good. Um, Kelly and I met as the Finance Committee, and of course, went over the forecast. So, we've been through all that. And then the only other thing I want to say, and kind of more directed to our new board members, we get a ton of invitations right now. So, I had a coworker today called this, called May, May-ember, because it's as busy as December. So, okay, yeah, it is. But, um, you know, everyone knows that invites us, that we cannot go to everything, and they're not going to see a board member, but just on, hm?
I hope they don't.
They know. On the 15th, on Wednesday, the senior projects are going to be on display at Worthington Kilborn, and it's just a, like, walk through and peek at them. So, if you have a few minutes to do that, and kind of the same thing on Friday at Lynnworth, when their seniors present. It's one of those things, if you have time to stop by for a few minutes, you can see it. So, it's always, we all know, it's nice to see what the students are doing. So, those are great events. And that's it for me.
Um, I did put a couple of them on our board calendar. You've likely seen. So, um, I don't know how much you guys, how often you look at the board calendar, but like I put the Lynnworth ones in there, and I know I put a few others. Um, so, we could always go in and just like note if we plan to attend, if for no other reason than to feel like, um, okay, someone's going to be present at this one. Exactly.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, okay. Let's, let's do that, because I know I have at least one of the Lynnworth ones on my work calendar that I'm planning to attend, so I'll go in and update that tonight, and we can each just update to note when we're attending. Okay? Because yes, we cannot be everywhere all of the time, and there are five of us, so we should. That, that's, I think, one of the values of what you shared earlier, that you learned at one of the conferences, where Akron, yeah, where they, I, not assigned, but they choose, maybe, you know, have a set number of schools. And you think about all of the events that take place throughout the district. If it would seem less daunting, and I would imagine, um, we actually might even attend more if we divided accordingly. So, that's something for us to think about, most definitely. Um, you guys have touched on a number of these, whether it's the, um, the retirement celebration, um, or, um, I did want to speak a little bit longer about, um, the Lions Club Volunteer Recognition Award Ceremony that was this evening, expressed gratitude to the Worthington Lions Club for doing this. Um, you know, we all know that volunteering can be a thankless job sometimes. And, and they, they, it's very nice that they have this moment every year where we can pause and really shine a spotlight on some of our amazing volunteers in this community that, um, with whom we couldn't execute a lot of what we do for our students and our staff. And there was one individual, um, that was the last person who was recognized today, that I asked Brenda if I, like, can I share that? Can I steal that sheet and share it with everyone? Because I thought it was a very heartwarming story, um, and this individual was not able to attend. So, I'm kind of hoping that one of her neighbors, or at least we can find a way to share with her this recording tonight. But it was Joyce Wells, who was recognized by Worthington Middle School. And it says that Ms. Ms. Joyce Wells lives near Worthingway. And over the years, she has taken the time each morning and over the weekend to walk the school grounds and pick up any stray items she may find, including the nearby woods. At times, it may be trash, but more often than not, it's the students' items that have been left on the field. Ms. Joyce will hang sweatshirts on our fence or set stray lunchboxes and water bottles on our picnic tables. She even leaves positive messages and chalk around our doors. Ms. Joyce is a strong example of the amazing community that we live in. She does not have children at Worthingway, but at the age of 89, she still takes such pride in our schools and the work we do to dedicate time every day to help our students, our school, and our neighborhood. I don't know that you can get anything, because we had to toe goosebumps, any better than that. So, Ms. Wells, if you're listening, we all appreciate you. Um, I, one other update that I wanted to share was that, um, I did attend the Worthington Education Foundation meeting this week, last week, excuse me. Um, they are still, they have definitely, um, filled a number of board positions. They have a strong, robust board at this point, which is very exciting, um, bringing lots of talent to that board, working very diligently on their relaunch. There will be a message going out to our teachers before the end of the academic year to plant that seed for funding resources for them, and just look for additional news over the summer as to their relaunch. So, that's very exciting. It really is. Yeah. Um, and with that, I think we'll move on to approval of minutes.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the April 22nd meeting as presented in enclosure E1, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the meeting, um, minutes from our last meeting? Okay, if you'll call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Excellent. Motion carries.
Uh, thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the appropriations modifications as listed in the agenda. Uh, this is one of the few times where this does not net to zero. So, for the general fund, uh, this aligns with the five-year forecast, what we talked about earlier. Uh, but then, um, I will point out, as Ms. Davis mentioned, buckets, there, this is one of the few times a year where we adjust our various grant funds. Most of these are, um, allocated based on number of students, and those change throughout the year. Uh, in particular, I just mentioned Fund 499, other state grants. That's our safety grant that we rewarded, as well as the Attorney General, uh, safety grant that's funding, um, the flock cameras at the high schools. Uh, and also, under other federal grants, our library at, um, Slate Hill received a grant, and also McCord, uh, they received an archery grant from ODNR. So, just like bless you, our McCord folks are going to be grand archers.
Aww.
Uh, but, um, I'd recommend that the Board approve the transfers listed in the agenda, please.
So moved. Second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Uh, moving on to new business, I'd like to recommend that the Board approve the five-year forecast as presented and discussed earlier in enclosure F1.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? I think we addressed earlier in the meeting, so if you'll please call for the vote.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome. Um, and lastly, I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education adopt the 2025 calendar year tax budget for the Worthington Public Library as adopted by the Library Board of Trustees at its April 16th, 2024 regular meeting, as indicated in the enclosure. As a reminder, uh, the Worthington Public Library is considered a public school district library, and that just means we are their taxing authority, so we must approve their, uh, tax budget that then goes to the county commissioners, and, um, we also approve their trustees each year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Would you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries. Dr. Bowers?
Thank you. So, before we begin with the consent agenda, um, I want to recognize Mallory Teklenburg. Mallory, could you just stand up? I know there's not that many people in the room. All right, so that's Mallory. So, Mallory has been a teacher for us at Thomas Worthington since 2014, a math teacher and a coach for us, so really almost for 10 years now. Um, on this consent agenda, you're going to be asked to approve her resignation as a teacher. Um, but you're also going to be asked to approve her employment, um, as an assistant principal at Thomas Worthington High School. So, um, we're very excited for Mallory to take on that leadership challenge. We've been trying to get her to do that for the last five years or so, and she finally feels like it's time, um, and we're super excited for her to do that. She'll be replacing Todd Keenan. If you remember that Todd, um, is leaving Thomas Worthington to go become our principal at Worthingway Middle School. So, um...
Dr. Bowers may say something? Dr. Bowers, may I say something? Just as a parent of Thomas Worthington students, I will say that your ability to help students love math again will be very missed, but very much looking forward to you serving in this capacity. So thank you.
Hundred percent true. Okay, so I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda. This is items G2 through G10 on your agenda. Items G2 through G10, please.
So moved. Second.
Will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Awesome. Mallory, congratulations. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve item H1. Item H1 is the acceptance of the donations listed on your agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Sorry, I should have asked that last time, too. Okay, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve item H2. Item H2 is the approval of the contract to replace the windows at the Worthington Education Center. That project should begin this July and will continue into the fall. Item H2, please.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments, other than we may miss the howling in this room?
And will, will it make it warmer?
Yeah, will it be warmer? We can hope.
Energy efficient?
It should be more efficient, for sure.
Will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Bowers. May I please have a motion to approve the policy updates recommended by Niola as presented for our first reading at our April 22nd regular board meeting, and for our second reading today?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? I think we likely would have entertained earlier this evening, so if you'll please call for the vote.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.